Okay, so let's bring the meeting to order.
Thank you. Very appreciate it.
So, this review and approval minutes for October 11th. Meeting.
I'll make a motion for approval minutes for October 11th.
Okay. Okay, any discussion on the minutes from October 11th?
There was a, there was a change on, under the assessor that I updated, um, a little more clearly if you wanted to take a peek at it.
Okay.
You can look at it. Looks fine to me. Looks good.
Okay. Yep, that looks good.
Assessor, right?
Yeah, it's right there, some assessor.
Okay, all in favor of minutes as tight, October 11th, adjusted? Okay, say aye.
Aye.
Adjustments to agenda?
Looks good to me. Mike, do we want, are you here for VORIC or are you here for?
I'm here as part of VORIC. I'll do an AP broadband next week.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yeah, 'cause we have another meeting next Wednesday.
What?
Oh yeah.
Back where the corrects go.
Yes, and don't get too excited, we don't need to drag this one out.
Three, 'cause we got last week two.
No.
We had a special meeting last week.
No, special meeting last week.
That's week four.
Thank you for canceling the planning division.
So.
So anyways, we don't have, we don't have to drag it on tonight, we can make it simple. Just saying. Okay, so, VORIC grant bids, we're not doing that this week.
We have one bid to open.
Okay.
I didn't print it, I thought about it right as I walked in the door, but it was probably been a good idea. I did email it, it's three years. It was like, started my computer, it was like, you probably should. Uh, but it was, uh, it's the bid for, uh, the planning, yeah, so it's the planning bid, we only received one bid and came in at the budget that was budgeted for it. Uh, and their timeframe meets the VORIC timeframe. Uh, it's from the SE group is the name of the company and they, they do, uh, planning for parks all over the mountain, all over the country really. But locally, they, uh, they did drop nature centers, so the parking lots laid out, everything sort of laid out there now. That was their, their project for landscape design. Some others, like the Woodleton, uh, the bridges in Woodleton, the parks that sort of line the river, uh, the Riverwalk or something. Couple of projects in hardwood.
Lynden Vale, East Burke, they did stuff, Montpelier, look like they did.
I did see something on that.
I worked with them on the Montpelier project, that's how I knew these guys. Uh, when we were planning this, I, I went to them first and we did get it out there and just didn't really get any responses.
SE group, okay, but I didn't see it from the SE unless it's.
It was from, from planning, I dropped it.
Okay, okay, yeah, I see the.
It's on Monday, I think.
Yeah, I see the, I read the email, but I don't know if I can view it, sometimes I have trouble.
So really the plan, you know, there's no real, you know, we come up with a plan that for what type of recreation facility we're gonna have or any, what we're gonna do with the Green Mountain Power property, number one, and then the ancillary parts of the stump dump, you know.
Yep.
Parts that we're not using, you know, we, we will meet with, uh, bring the town folk in and have a, what do they call it, a suret. We gather ideas.
That is, that's what it's called?
Yep.
So the brainstorming, so.
Everyone's still alive in those, it's like some weird word.
I've never heard that before.
That's an interesting word.
It's a suret, a public suret. So we'll gather ideas, we'll, we'll hope people attend and, and give us what they're thinking is missing and dropping and, and then we, uh, see if we can put it together in a plan and, and that plan is, it's not, we're not gonna do anything with it, it's just for the future, for grant applications, let's say, people want bike trails over there or something and then there's some bike grant comes out and then we can say, hey, we've got those plans for bike trails here, present it to the grant committee, you know, team or whatever.
Okay.
So, yeah, came in at, at the budget, came in, timeframe acceptable.
Okay, good.
So.
Need to make a motion to accept that bid on some.
Well, we haven't actually seen.
It was emailed to all three of us.
It wa, yeah, I know, I, I haven't actually looked at, I didn't look at the, usually we open the bid.
I, I know, it's weird, it's email, right? 'Cause I looked at it before.
Yeah, so usually you would open the bid and blah, 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 so what do we do?
I thought that.
Would we, we just accepted one bid?
It was. We could wait till next week's meeting.
Oh yeah, it's next Wednesday, so.
Not the end of the week.
Yeah, why don't we do that, why don't we, why don't we have it to look over for next week and then we'll, we'll approve it next week?
All right, sounds good.
That sounds all right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good, thank you.
It's looking optimistic though.
I won't notify them, right?
Okay.
Okay, good. Gary, Buckaroo's.
On the board, do we want to share with them the ones we're sending out? So we have three more RP going out for the parking area, the railroad bed grading and the culverts.
Okay.
I have them on paper, do you wanna see them?
Um, I trust that you and those two guys.
RPs is what you said they were.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking at the one for the whole round bed because it's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Yeah, it's just like, maybe you'll see something that we didn't, you know, it's a big ticket item, uh, but, but it's up to you, I mean.
I would say for the, I mean, if you wanna get an executive.
'Cause I trust Gary, 'cause I served on the board with Gary.
We put a lot of time into it too, we reviewed.
And that's why, that's why what you guys do is really important because we're trying to work with all the rest of the stuff.
What were the three?
And we skim over that stuff, but we don't.
Culverts.
That's why we trust Dan to do his thing and.
Parking area on Little Little Road.
Yeah, I just, we just came from there.
Okay.
Plus the surveying, surveying.
Surveying is currently out to bid, we're receiving, um, bids for it now. I unfortunately set the end date to be before your November eighth meeting, which doesn't exist, so it'll be, that'll be November eighteenth or nineteen.
We've got a couple in so far though.
Okay, that's good.
That's good, we have to do the stump dump next, we'll do that, we should probably, have to do that, so.
Okay. Um, and I don't care if you guys wanna look over.
You printed a mountain grant, Gary, right?
Yeah.
Gee, the courtesy of taking them, at least.
Yeah, Gary, I got the forethought to print things. I was just like, dude, you need tacos, brother, give me a, a guy here.
Yeah, Gary printed them off 'cause he's like, well, they're never gonna wanna look at it.
Doesn't matter. I see something working all day long. Yeah, you do. Any more on the board?
Now, so next week, we're really.
Four.
Outside of the SE group, we're gonna.
Oh, yeah.
So it's really, you take the, the deadline on, uh, the deadline on these three is fourteen, is that correct?
Yeah, fourteen, November fourteenth.
Gotcha. Is the majority of the culvert stuff up, that's up along the State Forest mainly, or is there stuff down on the main railroad bed too?
Uh, it is mostly, it is, it is mostly up, up there.
I saw one culvert earlier, before you get to the bridge for builds.
Yep.
There's, that one's junk.
Yeah, they're ball marked with orange ribbons.
They have posts.
Yep, two posts and orange ribbons. The map shows you where they are. And there's lots of culverts.
When were they ever, when was the last time they were ever touched?
Oh, I, I've never touched them.
Yeah, when they built that railroad?
Well, so all the rented ones are that way, yeah. But there's, there's a wooden one that will be replaced.
Oh.
A log, a hollowed out log. That one will be replaced.
That's not an antique, you have to hold on to that?
I know, it's, so anyway, they were talking with Greg, anyway, we'd display this, but, um. I don't, I don't remember them ever being replaced.
Right.
I think, uh, Greg mentioned a couple that he had replaced.
Yeah, but they were P C pipe, too short.
There are some of the ones we're replacing actually, right?
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of them were too short, a lot of them were, uh, a lot of them were steel pipe. I don't know if that was from the railroad bed or what, what that was, it was just iron pipe.
Probably for the week.
Pretty wild. Yeah. Train was probably the only way to get them out there too.
Yeah, 'cause you're probably driving across somehow with a thing and, I don't know.
But it's like the.
Solar commission for the culverts, I'll tell you that.
Oh yeah.
Trying to find them. Dude, we just had guys crawling up and down all the banks, you know, any spot that looked like, could they be watered there, should be, it was like something.
Is it just replacing, it's not, it's not putting in anything new?
There's one new one.
Okay.
One spot that I found that needed one.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and that was, um, on, uh, on the two thirty-two section where the Snowville Trail likes to, where we snowball dip down and the bike trail goes straight towards, uh, Bose, it's right in that area.
Okay, gotcha, looks good to me. So, um, with the little, little trailhead and parking, is, is it just creating a facility by falling under parking areas? There's, we're not looking at lights, we're not looking at anything like that?
No, that's not a grant.
There's gonna be a sign.
Sign and a key.
Yeah, key, yeah.
See a sign.
And it's gonna be designed where like the road's like this and it's just gonna be off the road, it's not gonna be like.
Kind of like what's up on two thirty-two for.
Yeah.
Little parking area on the trail.
Well, the, the sign will be more prominent.
Gotcha.
And then the kiosk will be more, if you've ever been up on LVRT at all, seen some of their kiosks. So it'll be a, a better version of what you see down there.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha, okay, cool.
So if you, if you know where the far, the further down entrance to the, to the stump dump is, basically one sign would be where that entrance is, there's gonna be like rocks there and then the, the parking area is gonna be right next to that, so just sort of where the no dumping signs are, and where the box currently are, they'll be moved back and be parking right there.
Okay, good. Sounds good, looks good to me?
Yep.
What do you guys think?
Sounds good, looks good.
Okay, good.
Definitely good to move forward.
Thank you. Great. Is that it?
For the board.
Okay, and then you have Buckaroo's, yeah, okay.
So, uh, Buckaroo's, uh, my annual request to use the town garage for the dictate ride-in.
Okay.
Uh, it's February tenth.
Okay.
So, I'm here to ask permission to do that.
Approved. All in favor? Say aye.
Thank you, I'll get these insurance paperwork to Lisa.
Okay.
What date, what date is that again?
February tenth.
Shouldn't be a problem, but you check with Harold?
I will double check with him, I had no issue last year.
Haven't had, and, yeah.
So I will double check, I have not done it this year.
Okay. Greg?
He, he made it clear that he had no issue with it.
I think they, they generally anticipate it happening, so, I don't think they plan on doing too much of that, so.
So, um, and my second request is, uh, the North County Road from Five Corners, um, to where the trail comes back on, just past the house that burnt last year. I'd like to request as a backup plan to use that as a Snowville Trail. I think it's actually, uh, I think there's a list of roads, we already have permission, and I believe it's already listed there.
Okay.
Uh, so, an old, old, old document, but I wanted to come, come forward and ask for that. The Beesters Land, uh, where we cut in the woods there to stay off the road, when Steve built down there, um, that is being sold.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know the outcome of that sale, I don't know who the new landowners are. This is my backup plan.
That would actually be a better route just to.
Absolutely. And, um, the, um, woman who's building, rebuilding a log cabin, she's a Snowmobile, she's just up here part-time, and the new people that bought Steve's old place, I don't know if they're full-time residents or not, I don't know, they're from, they all, I think Ohio plates. I, I'm not sure what their plans are, I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure if they're plowing the road or what their plans are.
I don't see a problem, I don't know what, I don't.
I don't have a problem with that.
So, you know, it's, uh, definitely will sign appropriately, if it's being used, if it's being plowed or whatever. It is, it is my backup plan, I'm, if it's not being plowed, I'd love to use, just use it, but, um, hoping the new landowners, you know, I'll be able to keep using it, but I just don't know.
Okay.
And I got, I can't wait till December fifteenth to decide.
Um, just a, a thought is if it, if you said the document you got was what's approved for use is old, maybe it's worth updating that and that, you know, then we can make sure that it's out there.
I just remember finding it when I was almost like.
Yep.
Yeah, so, back when, yeah, I can see if I can find that with the help of other people.
I, I'm just, just a thought, I mean, it's not necessarily required, but wouldn't be a bad idea to just, you know, update it from time to time.
So, uh, in regards to that, uh, landowner permission forms and landowner bridge forms. I have them from the town, we have two bridges on town property, the Hatch Bridge and the one, uh, at Matt Nunn's. And the landowner permission is the railroad bed. The, the landowner permission form was signed by Peter Lyon in twenty fifteen, didn't know if we wanted to update that with the new select board. The landowner agreement for Snowmobile Bridges was signed by Bern Bulley in two thousand and four.
Oh, we should update that too.
Yeah, and, um, and the, and the Trail Masters and, or the people who signed it on our side were Mill Lamerton, my dad, and Buzzie Eastman, they're no longer here, so I was thinking we should update some of these agreements. So, um, the new form required, the old form was just a blank agreement, didn't say where the bridge was, the new one actually put GPS coordinates of the bridge.
Okay.
So I just pulled these out tonight. So I don't know if you wanna sign these and then I fill them out and leave you copies, or you want me to get them all filled out and then you sign them, how do you wanna do it?
Either, or, what?
Are you gonna be back next week here, or?
I hope not.
Okay.
So just leave it, we'll sign them.
What?
We'll sign them and you can fill them out.
For what, sixteen?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah.
And that's me?
Definitely could update these from time to time. So this is, there's two bridge ones. Yeah, and then there's one thing on what we call the owner permission.
Where do we sign it? Right here.
You need to?
Yeah.
So you spelled me that, I'll have that space for you.
Same with that one.
I'll leave copies for them.
I guess you have to need them too. Why go into it?
I can fill in that, I was up to one.
Lifetime on.
Yeah, like I, when I were rededicating the bridge at Matt Nunn's and I sent in that, you know.
That's town property at Matt, that, that bridge that goes.
Town road.
Oh, 'cause that's that class four road that.
That road crosses this lawn onto two thirty-two.
I guess I never realized that.
You know, to keep it looking like a road.
No.
Well, we, he's blocked it out before with things so people couldn't go up to the area. Which I don't know, well, really could do that.
Well, we actually have a cable problem.
Which, you can't even do that, probably.
But it, you can't allow anything but solar crossing the bridge, 'cause that's all they're built for.
But it's, I'm not even gonna get into that. Sounds good.
I was asked to put a cable up, I put a cable on.
No, I know, I just, that's a whole nother thing, I, I get it, I, yeah, okay. That's good.
I've got some, there, I got the old Wellington Bridge beams, you want us to go to make it a legal highway bridge. Okay.
If, I don't know, it's our responsibility to, that would be a little tricky, would the bridge have to be brought up too, 'cause it's class four road, so, so, it's passable, so if somebody falls through, so then what?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's why I signed, that's why I signed it for Snowmobile use only.
Right. I don't even wanna get it, okay, so anyways. Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, so that's all I have for Buckaroo's.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Good. Highway, and I just, I didn't have anything from Highway, but then I got an email, I see, we all got an email from, let's see. Harold, let's see, Highway update somewhere here. Update, Highway. We have received the culverts that we ordered and we have got the four steer tires for the trucks and got them installed, we are working on sections of Goodfellow Road that have been a problem with washing out, we will complete that next week, we are going to get everything ready for winter, after that, thanks Harold. So. Highway update.
Did you look at the color?
Okay, good. So we have, we have proof.
Yeah, I saw the culverts.
Okay, yeah, I saw, there's a lot of culverts. There is a lot of culverts. Do we do that every year, we get that many culverts?
Forty-eight hundred dollars.
That's a lot of culverts. Anyways, ah, well, um, treasure.
Um, what did you say, somebody was storing stuff up there last meeting?
Um, somebody was, yeah, yeah, somebody had asked to store some, something.
I wonder if it was culverts?
No, it was culverts.
'Cause I don't think forty-eight hundred dollars would buy, forty, wouldn't buy that many culverts. That's a lot of culverts. I don't know, so anyway.
Maybe he is storing something, didn't he say something?
Somebody did, maybe, we did such.
Maybe that's what they're storing, the state was storing culverts and it had to be.
Okay, anyways, moving along here.
I sent, um, the email out about, um, Budget Day and you guys have it printed and, um, the agenda, I just kinda used what we've used the last few years for the agenda.
Okay.
And, and hopefully, um, you know, everybody will have their, um, budgets back to you guys, the fifteenth, I, I said myself too, 'cause I could print them all for you, if they wanna.
I had one, one thing with the, with the, with the budget stuff, there's only fifteen minutes, I think, for lunch.
Thirty, thirty minutes.
Forty-five, lunch.
Oh, no.
No, fifteen minutes.
No, that's thirty-five.
No, lunch is at twelve fifteen and we start at twelve forty-five.
That's thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right.
But we.
I was thinking it should be an hour.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm just kidding. Okay, it looks good.
Uh, tax money's still coming in, due date's next Friday, um, I'll be here, you know, what, nine to five or eight to five, I think it is, all week, next week. I have some training happening, I've joined these two, these, uh, NIMRIC webinars that I'm looking forward to, there's four of them, um, it's online, so, um, I think they're about an hour or so each over the next four weeks, and then I have a seminar, um, on December sixth that I go to, it's in, uh, Fairleigh, so the office will be closed, that's about the end of the year payroll, which is a good one to go to. I'll be here, Carrie will be here, yeah, and, um, and I did not have a chance to print, um, more invoices, so I will do that this week, uh, tomorrow, so if you guys could stop in between tomorrow night and Monday morning, then I can mail them all out. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Town clerk, Carrie.
We had the dog hearing last week, I mailed out the certified notice to the person today, so had it, so he's gotta sign it and get it back to us, so, proof that he received it, so that is done, I think Dan's probably gonna talk about another dog thing later, maybe not. FEMA, FEMA, I think is finally finished today, he came again, came last week, just finalizing questions that really didn't even pertain, but they had to be asked and filled in on the portal and emailed and then things don't open 'cause they send them in some weird way.
So has this been a good exercise?
It's been lovely.
Okay, good.
So, uh, I think it's all looking fine and, you know, has to go through FEMA and then to the state, FEMA approves it through a bunch of things, state has to approve it and then we'll get our money at some point.
Okay.
The seventy-five percent and then the state's portion is the twelve percent. So that's good, that's looking, we're at the end of that.
Can I just add?
Sure.
I did hear in the news, I mean, I'm sure everybody's probably heard of it, but, uh, the state is looking to do more, um, I think, funding for grants to do kind of what we're already doing with property here, but do more.
Mitigation.
Mitigation work, so something that we might wanna make sure that, like Harold's looking at, does it, maybe stuff that we can do.
To prevent.
To prevent.
Stuff from happening.
Yeah. Which we did, we, we fared pretty well with the floods this year, but.
We can't complain compared to.
Bridge of some places.
Ferry and, and the rest of Chester and what's all of that.
I forget what town, the guy said today with the landslide somewhere, I can't remember.
Chelsea or Cora or Rose Town.
No, it was like, he was up at Burke, that was further north, yeah, I don't know if it was Burke, I know that's where he was, but anyway, just that alone was like six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, but, yeah.
I think that was Barden.
I was thinking it was with it.
Yeah, I think it's Barden.
It's crazy, there's a lot of damage.
Yeah, so we, we lucked out and it's finishing up, so that's good.
This time we did good, I mean, we did do so good, so.
Uh, I did get an update from Dennis Casey about the EV charging station, said he couldn't make it tonight, says nothing new to report, he did place another call to Nick Caputo at the Vermont State Parks, asking about their plans for a charging station there, and he hasn't received a reply yet, he's gonna keep working on everything and he's gonna report at the next meeting.
Okay, good, cool, thank you.
And the MERC grant, the Municipal Energy Resilience Program, uh, she sent over some paperwork and they signed off on it and sent it back, so we're just, you know, that's just plugging along, they're gonna do all three buildings and do the energy assessment, you know, it's just simple stuff of saying, you know, that they would come and someone had to be here and, and just those things, she just needed it done so it could get moving along. So that is good, and I gave you the sheriff contract.
Yeah, we have it here.
Went up a little bit, can just have that in our thoughts for Budget Day, if we wanted to up hours.
When do we have to sign, do we have to sign that, we have to sign that contract, when's that gonna be signed by?
I would say December, January.
I would say, we said we could talk about it. We could discuss it, budget, budget time, how many hours and whatever.
Yeah, I did it, um, so this year we did, it was thirty-nine dollars an hour, we did six hours, it was a little under, little over thirteen thousand dollars, I think we put in some extra money to cover Fall Foliage Day and a few oddball things, so I, I ran it at eight hours a week. So I, I ran it at eight hours a week, the new rate jumps it to about seventeen thousand five hundred. Then add on extra day or two, we're looking at eighteen thousand.
Which they really haven't been putting in eight hour, I mean, they haven't even been putting, what did we request, six hours?
Six.
And they haven't really been doing six hours a lot of the summer, right?
Well, I'd have to look back at the exact.
It doesn't seem like they've been there that much.
I think the thing is, is we, we, we don't pay for the six hour, we don't pay.
Right, unless they use it.
Right. Only if they use it, so that, you know. That's kinda.
And maybe now with a couple more people that they can commit to a little more time too. But anyway, it's a thought for later on.
I think it's, it's uh, it's definitely worth some discussion around it, because I think, you know.
Right.
That's a concern in the community.
Okay, good.
And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you Carrie. So then we have Assistant Sester, Dorothy is out, well she left all of us. An update, I will not be at tonight's meeting, she had a twin state mutual aid meeting to be at, NVDA grant, I contacted. Yes, Nun, 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 wouldn't be Nun.
I don't have it, I don't know.
Okay, it is not sure, he is not sure if the map project would qualify for the grant, oh, he was here for the.
Oh, yeah.
That grant, okay, he sent me the application form, which I completed and submitted, I requested five hundred dollars for the survey map. Maintenance and repair, twenty-five hours, which it seems low, it just seems like it would take more than that, I would have s- but.
What is it she's saying for them?
Twenty-five hours at twenty dollars an hour. An hour for, remember she said, one week or?
For them to put in the pictures or something?
Yeah, to try to get stuff updated for the thing, I don't know, seems like more, but.
Well, I, I, I think that. But maybe we follow, I mean, what we're talking about too is not just the, the map maintenance and repair, but.
The whole thing.
Well, photographs of properties and things like that, all, all part of that discussion.
Right.
So it might qualify because if you, it, it's probably a dollar amount thing that they're looking for, so.
Right. Online.
If I run into Dorothy, I'll talk to her.
They're being just an assistant.
Right, to do, to do pictures, yeah, or, you know, an assistant for, you know, administrative stuff.
Aaron, can you put that in the select board folder so I have it for the minutes?
Online, property cards, I plan to send update information to N E M R C.
Nimmer.
Nimmer, next week, so they can do our yearly update, twenty-ten reappraisal, I have discovered that we are, that we are, there are no photos from twenty-ten. Let's see, so, okay, uh, update on the computer at this time of reappraisal, um, that is why we only see two thousand and four photos and some, how does this happen? Twenty nineteen ones event.
Well, two thousand and four photos are what's on there, but you have a reappraisal in twenty-ten and a reappraisal in twenty nineteen.
I know, but they never. And nothing has.
Nothing.
No.
Got an update in, how, how does that happen?
I have no idea, that, to me it's inconceivable that you could do two reappraisals.
And not have any newer photos?
I mean, it should be part of that process, right, is update the photo as well as.
Well, to justify your tax rate.
Right, no, no change to, you know, there's no change to the property or.
Right, you still need to update your photos, I don't know, I don't know how that happened.
Yeah.
Susan Emerson property, Carrie, Dana and I will meet Suzanne on Thursday, November second.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, good, Dana property. Meredith's sister, Suzanne, must be Suzanne, Meredith's sister. No, Ashley's sister.
Yeah, she's talking about somebody else.
John and I have done extensive, extensive research on this property, John will contract, contact Sherri Meredith to update her. That's a whole different thing.
It's that Tara Dana's, the two little strips.
Oh, we talked about this.
They're trying to figure out where it ever shows who owns it.
Right, okay, so, that's what Dorothy has. Fire fast, do we have anything?
Uh, no, my knowledge.
Okay.
We did cancel the Newberry phone.
Great.
Did you?
So that was what you guys decided, I got an email.
And even the fire department was on board.
Yeah.
I do believe so.
Newberry, yeah, so I got the email saying that you voted on it, that, thanks for.
I wasn't at the meeting.
So I called uh, Newberry, town office, town clerk and let her know, she said, okay.
Okay, good, and I think I saw Steve maybe working on the fire station Sunday or something, shoring up some stuff or something maybe, hadn't heard, so, okay. So we'll just go with no update. Constable.
Maya, I think.
Do we have anything from Mark, Dan?
The dogs in the Sheriff's Office's house, working with Mike Scott on that.
Okay.
Um, everyone's aware, including the state, what's going on, uh, the people were evicted because they had children and the house wasn't up to code.
Okay.
So the state came and said, you can't be here with the children, once it comes back up to code, they're gonna move back, family is coming in and feeding the dogs and watering them, so.
Okay.
I'm checking on them every three days, just to make sure.
Days, okay, okay. Okay, that's good. What a mess, okay. Um. And I sent Mark a thing to send in his time cards, time things.
Seen it, yeah.
Yeah, but he said he would.
Yeah.
Library, do we have anything on library?
No, I think it's all going fine.
But she was here last week.
Yeah, she came last week.
Sarah, so that's good, okay. Zoning, Dan.
Hey, I've got a question and need some direction from you folks, we're getting more mail issues like this. This has been there possibly three months. These have been there for, I don't know how long, for a long, long time, this obviously is within the town right of way. If they were to come down through the plow or go up through the plow, they'd probably strike that.
Well, then it won't be there anymore.
True story.
But, so, how do we enforce that, or where is this at?
Because this is on the crossroad, actually right across from her house.
Okay, so how do we enforce, who's gonna?
We need to take and send a letter to these guys, or this, this owner, telling them that these are within the town right of way, they need to be, they need to be moved back. This couch is, it was pouring the day I was there, this couch is sitting out there with this microwave on it, and it's been there for how long?
Three months for sure.
At least, three months.
So the question I have too is, are they moving the, you're saying?
No, they're not moving these either.
They're, they're, those are not supposed, they should be.
They attract them.
They should move them, you know, you should move them.
Move them every day, after they've been emptied, if they put it out the night before they get emptied and take them back the day they emptied, that's it.
So we need to do a letter and send them a letter saying, you need to pick up your crap and your trash cans, stay on your own.
You've, you've, if it stays any longer, I mean, it's been there for three months, but maybe put a timeframe on it, it's considered dumping and it, you know, needs to be removed.
That's, that's up to you to set the timer.
No, I mean. Could you say?
Next meeting.
You know, this, this has been, it's sad.
Who's gonna write the letter and who's gonna do this, I guess, too? Cause we don't really have somebody that does.
I can write the letter.
I can write the letter if you want.
And then we can have it in select board folder.
Yeah.
Be viewed.
Let's do a letter, put it in the select board folder and we'll sign it and we'll get it dealt with.
We'll get real soon.
And it can even get served, I don't know, did, or we just mail it, mail it?
Can mail serve.
We mail it certified.
Was your neighbor, Carrie, you can just go tell him and pick it?
No, it shouldn't mail certified.
Let's say the word, huh?
This is only one of several issues like this, that's why I'm bringing it.
So, so there's other places that we need to deal with too? So should we have some kind of a form or something that we?
Well, we're gonna have to.
Between highway zoning, you know, it kind of falls into a lot of.
Yeah, it comes back to, we don't have an ordinance for trash or cleanliness and.
No, but we do have.
No, but it's on town property.
Town right of way.
No, true, true.
It's on town right of way, so.
And I measured that.
Well, if you start there. And if everybody puts their stuff out beside the road and. There's a lot of problems.
Right.
So you could have a form or letter of some sort made up so that.
Yeah.
All you have to do is sign it and send it.
Yeah.
So Dan, I'll work with you on that, you know.
Okay, that would be good. Anything else for zoning?
No.
How does that even fall into zoning? They didn't have a permit?
No, we don't have a permit. I'm getting a lot of permits after the fact.
Does that mean we make extra money?
I think we should.
Because if you don't file a permit, well, you're supposed to get fined, right, if you don't file a permit and you don't do it, then you get fined, right?
You don't get fined unless you don't do the permit after you're notified. Don't, it's a state for you.
Really?
One of those laws that they want you to enforce, but they wanna handcuff you at the same time. It's kinda like the, the vets do your dogs, same thing.
Okay, well, we can have policies and we can do whatever we want until somebody comes and yells at us for not doing it.
Yeah, they don't come to you, they come to me.
I don't, I don't. I don't see the problem here.
Make friends and influence people.
Is that it for zoning?
Yeah.
How about health?
We're good.
Not your health, health policy. Okay, well, that's good. Uh, maintenance?
I have a couple things, um, I emailed Tim Corey about some, um, I think it's in the select board folder, I emailed him in August about the couple things that we needed an estimate on.
Okay.
And the light outside the gym and this light, um, Matt tried to change the bulbs and it's not the bulbs, it's the ballast.
Ballast.
So that has to be added to Tim's list.
And this should be all updated to something other than these for more efficiency.
Sure, I mean.
Yes, should be all.
So I don't know what else to do.
Change the ballast.
Meaning, he hasn't.
He hasn't responded.
I know, he's busy.
He went away and I gave him a month.
It's hunting season, so you can reject this.
So I emailed him again, he's following.
He should've said something to me, I just saw him the other day.
Okay, and reached out to, well, he talked to him again.
Yeah, I will. And actually, on that same subject, should we talk about the lights in the park, should we continue to keep those on throughout the winter? Should we get them on a time schedule now so that they're coming on and going off?
You know, I think, I mean, don't you think? Yeah, no, I think, it makes sense to have one all night long.
Now, don't you do the same thing?
It does, it does make sense.
It does not, yeah.
That refers to whatever, your lights don't come on.
Well, you, you changed, we changed it to all night after all the trouble.
Cause we were having a bunch of trouble just to keep things lit up, um.
Could just do it like ten P M.
And the light's been on in the little gazebo thing, but then now it's not on, now, somebody, does it, can you turn it on and off?
I think so.
Oh, so people.
The light or the pumpkin?
The light.
The pumpkin.
No, they didn't put lights on the pumpkins this year.
I think they're having trouble finding the orange lights and the green lights and then, and then kids take them on.
Cause usually they put the, it looks cute at night, but.
Who's that?
Uh, just people. Oh, Tom and Jan do the decoration, but people mess with stuff, I'm assuming, in the gazebo, so, whatever, so.
Or if the light, the light bulb's not on screw or if it actually is like.
It could, Matt's had the.
I don't know, sometimes it seems like it's on and then sometimes it's not on.
Yeah, I don't.
But we don't have people that like regular, like keep an eye on all that stuff, we don't have a maintenance department, Dan, you wanna add that to?
No, no.
So, uh, anyways, so I don't know, the lights, what do we wanna do, we wanna.
I actually think we need to leave them on all winter.
So, they can come on at whatever dark and then go off at nine or ten o'clock.
And they go on at like four thirty, turn off at ten o'clock or something, or nine o'clock.
Add that to, um.
Tim Corey.
Yeah, cause the rest of us don't know how to mess with it.
No, we don't have to do it either, so, it's complicated.
Well, it shouldn't be that complicated, but yes.
I have the manual.
So Carrie knows how to do it.
Can't be that complicated.
I can read it.
YouTube it.
Okay, and I also reached out to Aiken, um, plumbing and heating to clean our.
Furnaces and stuff.
Furnaces and all that, so he's, they're coming, oh, I have the date, uh, I think it's February twenty, okay.
So did he do it all, three buildings?
Yeah, he's planning to do it all in one day.
Yeah.
You know, here and then fire department, and then the highway shouldn't be that bad, there's just only two years old, but it still needs to be serviced, so, that is happening. Um, and we have a bunch of old wooden chairs that are folded up in there, that, I think there's forty-eight of them. And so we were thinking of trying to put them, I think we talked about this one all the time, try to clean out till when it works, get it done, cause we can't use them. Somebody might want one.
Put one on the right way.
Yeah, right, yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
So if we sell any for like two dollars a chair or twenty-five for the whole thing.
Leave it out on the state highway and then it's.
Put it on the, put it on the crisis list.
We can put it.
Don't put it out for free, make sure there's a price on it and then they'll steal it.
That's right.
People really think there's value.
Oh, it's good.
So we, well, we're trying to see if, um, we can put our Facebook marketplace on the town Facebook page and sell them that way. And then any money that we get, we can put towards the community building improvement project reserves.
Okay.
If we get any money, if we sell them, I, so I just wanted to.
Figure.
Tell you that.
Okay.
And then the city, did you happen to ask the sheriff if they wanted the, the constable cruiser?
I haven't seen him since then, but yeah.
Yeah, we, we were talking about, we got the extra equipment out of the cruiser.
I sold the lights.
Lights and that kinda stuff, see if they want it.
Uh, they should probably update them.
Well, and when they buy a cruiser, it comes with all that stuff.
It comes with everything.
Look good near chuck.
Put that on Marketplace.
Actually, well, you could just put that on Marketplace too with the chairs.
Sure, let's try.
Um, well.
Well, the only other thing is, is there police lights, you sell police lights for.
Yeah, but you can probably delete that stuff off the internet anywhere, anywhere, so.
But, but do we wanna, we, do we wanna contribute to somebody in Groton potentially buying those and causing issues, I think that's probably.
Why would you have to have a permit purchase?
What we wanna do, yeah.
I think it's gonna be a fire, and if all of your firemen is gonna buy.
Well, but I think they're blue lights, they're not, they're.
Oh, it's gotta be red.
It's for the blue lights.
They're blue lights again, yeah.
It's fire if you turn them on.
I, again, maybe.
Yeah, well, in New York it uses the share.
Yeah, that's true.
Otherwise, just chuck, we just chuck them out. We, it's the, the console with the radios and it's probably got fire or something, but.
Okay.
Um, and the only other thing I had was that the town attorney sent the letter, it's in the folder, um, to Consolidated about the easement.
Oh, great.
So it's, it's dead, it's out for now, so we'll see.
See if it's the right address, the right person reads it, does something with it.
Consolidated, yeah, yeah.
I've been working with them, if you need help.
Oh?
If, yeah, I work with them on environmental stuff, cause I've got some people.
Well, it's poorly.
Yeah, who, who do you send them easements?
Right now, yeah.
I, I could ask, I, I'm working with the director of like, um, pretty big, you know.
Yeah, you could ask.
Oh, that would be the guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause most redirect this.
So, so it's for the easement for.
Mill Street.
Mill Street, so they own property there, it's for the drainage.
Yeah.
I'll be like, George, you happen to know like who, when it says the easement.
I'll email you tomorrow morning.
We'll email you the easement.
I'm not worried in the next two days that it got me, uh, from in the field, so I'll probably wanna deal with it.
Okay, all right, that's great.
Well, that's great. It's good to hear it's been.
Good, and then, uh, which you've been working with Mike with the fencing and I sent him a message asking when, an update of when he was gonna do that and make sure he got his contract done, which I guess he got his contract done and he's saying that he's gonna be here next week to hopefully work on that.
To fix the fencing around Pufferfield.
Yeah.
And Frost.
Yeah.
That's great.
Get that done.
Yep, that's fantastic, yeah.
That's what I have for an update for that. Um, okay, that was it, Lisa with maintenance, okay. I T, Carrie?
Um, library, um, that's probably eighty percent done.
Okay.
The, the, uh, the network jacks that I added in the two different rooms, three different jacks are all done and working.
Where, uh, Steve's gonna be adding a shelf, we're gonna be moving the router up there, adding, then I got some old wiring to do. Uh, then we're installing some, the wireless stuff is coming in, just came in, so we're gonna start setting that up next. Uh, here, I started setting up the new computers, I've done all the preliminary work, I come here on Mondays and Tuesday nights and work, so I've gone through, got them all the preliminary. Now, I'm ready to do the, the scary stuff, moving stuff over, I'm gonna start with Dorothy. Um, I was gonna do it this week, but I wasn't getting home to seven, seven thirty, so, I'm just not gonna start at that late.
Okay.
Cause I need to be prepared for when she calls me the next day and says something doesn't work, so, um, so I, like, I wanna do it on Monday, so when she calls me on Tuesday, I can come in Tuesday night to work on it or whatever. So, I'm gonna start with her, I've already met with her, we've talked about, she's taken me a tour of her computer, where things are and how her email is and everything, so, hopefully. Hers will probably be the easiest to do. Uh, Carrie and Lisa's will probably take me a whole weekend each. There's, there are a lot more, there's a lot more stuff going on there.
Okay, all right.
But, I'm working on it.
That's good, good.
Working on it, and then, then when budget time comes, we'll talk about what we do next year.
Okay, great.
Uh, but you wanted to talk about cameras, I believe?
Well, we did, we have had some discussions about in the future, um, about talking about cameras possibly in the parking lot here. Maybe, um, if we do something with the solar charging car thing, some cameras that point in the park and around. Just, a lot of towns are going, you know, having cameras because of situations and problems and.
Yeah.
Issues and whatever, so, at least we have something that will record something if there is a problem, so.
We don't have a security system for the building, correct?
We have cameras in the gym, did you mean?
Yeah, right.
We don't have a security system.
So, what would we need and what would, what would it take and whatever, what, what, what would you suggest?
Well, um, so, you know, people in their homes are, they're putting the, you know, the, the ones that hook to your wifi, they're wireless and et cetera, cause they're easy to do. Uh, I believe there's a subscription fee to do that, to be able to have the space in the cloud push the data up to, so you can view it from your phone. And I believe something like that with three cameras is like five hundred dollars plus the subscription, I don't know what the subscription is.
Five or ten maximum.
There's all kinds of options.
There's all kinds of options, you can get some other ones where you pay more upfront and it's got memory there, right, where it comes into a server, and you store local if you want.
I have one of the ones with the box and it's all connected for, my dad gave it to me, I was like, I'm not moving up friggin' New York City, I'm going to Groton, not, got cameras all the crap.
So, how, how long are you getting out of your?
And I have bank and I don't pay a subscription and I store whatever, all the stuff.
So, you must've paid for it upfront.
I guess, I didn't really pay that much attention and it, and it notifies me, it's, it's, it's like motion detected, so it checks them all.
But it may only retain that locally thing.
Are you, are you keeping thirty days of information?
No, cause I, I mean, there's a, I have a, a memory bank and when, you know, it tells you how much you have on it, but I usually clear it so that if there was a situation, I keep up to date on it.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of, a lot of questions to answer to how, so, when you go wireless, one, so, the bad, that means the cameras are running on a battery.
Right.
How long are the batteries gonna last if they're lithium, hopefully they'll?
Depends on how much, how much motion they get is what heats up the batteries, you use the lithium batteries.
But in a public area?
You're gonna get a ton of motion, which is gonna eat the batteries up, so it really makes sense.
Right. So, who's gonna be changing, who's gonna be climbing up, cause you're gonna have to have them high.
You don't change them, you gotta charge them.
Yeah.
Take them down.
Something you can change too.
You have to be wired.
And also, if you make them too sensitive, they, the batteries.
Yeah, so, so, I, I mean, really, that wouldn't make sense, we could have something hard wired.
I think it would be hardwired and, you know, then the question is, do you wanna just store it locally in a secure room or something?
Honestly, I think when it comes down to this, is, well, you have, you have to look at it, what, what's the purpose of the cameras, right? The cameras are to provide safety and security for the properties, it helps with insurance liabilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right? With that, is it worth us trying to do that on our own versus contacting somebody like Tasco to do it ourselves, to, to contract that out?
Did you see the quote they gave Bradford, it was in the Journal of Opinion, I think it was eleven thousand five hundred dollars for like four cameras, or out there.
Yeah, and I called one of those, one of those, uh, alarm code or whatever, and it was like huge money, we're talking, it was like fifteen grand.
So, when I installed, uh, just a cheap, you know, CCTV type system, you know, low res, um, out in the gym, uh, it was gonna cost you, you had a guy got a price, it was gonna be like, I don't know, two grand or something to put one camera in the center of the ceiling, uh, an IP camera, uh, for three hundred sixty degrees, and I, you know, I said, I, I'll get that system for five hundred dollars and I'll install it. And that's what we did, and I'm glad we went that route because it doesn't get used, no one looks at it.
Right.
You know, um.
Which could be the same situation with this.
Right, I think we need to change that, cause it would be nice to be able to look back and see after someone's rented it, rented the gym and make sure, you know, it was used properly or something, I don't know. Cause I don't, I just, I mean, it's.
So, maybe we could add to the agenda, like, um, talking about more discussion and doing some research and figuring out.
Yeah, I just, I just thinking, if, if you're thinking going for the cheap system, the wa, the wireless stuff, it's just too much maintenance involved.
Right.
In keeping it going, um.
But you could, can you have a wireless thing that sends the information, it's a, you know, it's to the.
Be sending the power to it, be sending the power to it.
I have, I have one of those, it's powered, it's, it's hardwired with just regular light.
You can, you can go with the power, but, and then you can do wireless back to a server.
That's what mine does.
Which, why, why wouldn't we do that?
Versus the cloud?
Yeah, well, yeah, so it's.
Then you don't have to worry about if you, who's gonna be checking it every five days and cleaning it out, cause of space.
Well, I'm thinking it would just.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, yeah, you keep repeating itself, but typically, you usually like to have a month's worth of data, because it could be a while before you realize something was wrong.
There was a situation.
Cause if you have four cameras or five cameras reporting, you know, that eats up a lot of space.
Right.
Especially when you're gonna be getting, um, the four K cameras, you know, that's a lot of data, it's recording every time there's a motion out there.
I guess the question is, is, how many issues have we had that would have been needed to have those cameras?
No, but, you know, we're seeing more and more of this, so, it's, it's good for discussion, I think.
You know, I, I get that, I just, it's.
I'm hearing that there are a lot of people out here in the middle of the night.
So, the, the cheapest, and not what I'm recommending, you're gonna start at five hundred dollars and then you're gonna start, you'll likely go up into the thousands.
Well, the motion lights.
Yeah, we should put.
That doesn't give you a key to go serve.
Solar, we, I don't know, I know.
After we hit the parking lot, we should put, we should actually. No, I know, I, I agree, but at least we have something.
And the other thing is, you have to.
I mean, hell, we go Walmart, buy fifteen dollar fake cameras.
I have two sixty dollar game cameras. We'll stick those up on trees on the property.
Yeah, you put your twelve batteries in there.
Okay, so.
I got a solar one, I got a solar one, it lasts forever.
The other part is, you're, we're all talking cameras, but the other aspect is security alarm.
Right, and that's, that's kinda where, I mean, obviously, the fire department's right here, if there's a fire, you know, fire departments are here, but, you notify, you know, in the middle of the night, this, you know, the boiler blows and we got a big fire. Who's calling the fire department and telling them that there's a fire in the building, right? It comes back to the connection to doing a full safety and security system for the, for the building, if, if that's what we wanna do. Having wired in alarms, having wire, I mean, I don't know about sprinklers, but I know when you looked into that, it was pretty expensive anyway.
Yeah.
The sprinklers, you know, including, you know, do we have fire protection that's part of a system, you know, do we have, um, you know, how are those cameras set up, right? Cause I think the other thing too is, is if we, if we get the cameras, we then have, uh, uh, we have to monitor that, right? So now we have to come up with a plan to monitor that, cause if there's an issue and we don't catch it, don't say anything about it, or the building gets broken down.
Okay, so scrap the cameras and we move on here.
Well, just keep it on.
We'll just have discussion, yeah, that's all, okay. Okay.
One week to bring back your quotes.
Four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine.
December second. Thanks, Gary, for the update on I T and stuff, uh, planning commission, do we have anything?
We have nothing.
Okay.
We could come up with five thousand dollars off a tree, so.
Thank you.
We did Borg stuff, how about N E K, are we, and C U D, are we putting that off or wouldn't?
Yeah, we're gonna put that off, um, probably next week, um, I'll get some updates, hopefully in the next week, if not, it'll be the eighteenth.
Okay, yeah, sure, how about infrastructure project updates and all that stuff, do we have anything?
So, that was the easement that.
Oh, right.
And then there's a bill for the, um, U B M that is in there for you to get.
Right, okay.
It's cheap.
Yeah.
Why do they charge on two dollars? Was it really cheap or not?
I was gonna say.
They charge an arm and a leg.
Yeah, I mean, if I could get paid that much, dig a toothful hole and.
Well, did they come with vans full of people?
I don't know, they come in vans full of interns.
One, one guy came in a few times, but I didn't.
I've worked on.
Van full of people.
Yeah, I'm just surprised, cause they did it over the summer, that they didn't have like students or something that they brought along to do that.
This was a young.
Yeah.
Yeah, they make whatever, twenty dollars an hour, twenty six, graduate school, tuition or something.
Based on that, it's a lot more minutes.
I could've told you that, yeah, that, I've seen them working on job sites, I've been working, I've been like, wow, who's paying that bill?
Okay, open to public, other business? Going once.
I'm gonna be here for your budget meeting, whatever you guys inside find you need.
Okay, I won't be either, so anything you have.
I hope you can sign this file.
He's here a lot of experience.
We're gonna be having, sorry.
Okay, uh.
I'll still be having.
Follow-ups, uh, for speed sign, for me, I talked to the sheriff's department today and the woman I talked to said she doesn't know about it, but she was gonna reach out to James and figure out what, so, we're still trying to get that report on our speed study for the second time, they brought the, whatever radar, radar sign down.
I mean, the first one was pretty comprehensive.
Fire alarm protection, I think we could take that off, can't we, didn't we decide?
I thought that.
Are you still gonna?
Yeah, I still. That's for the, the gym upstairs.
It's for the.
It's a cover, cover for the fire.
Oh, okay, it's not the, okay, okay, all right. Uh, fire department, monthly check on town building, fire extinguishers, which we already, I thought we talked to.
Who asked, but he said he had asked the fire department, he couldn't answer.
Oh.
So, we need to know he answered.
I thought he said he could take care of that, but no, he said, I thought he said.
He said he was going to ask the fire department.
Yeah, he said he would have some fire.
Okay, well, we'll check back and wait.